First item for legislation is number eighty. Mr. Ventura, are we gonna?
We're holding that again with the last payment and second reading.
Holding it second reading, okay. Ordinance number five is related to fiber optic infrastructure. Mayor, is that you?
Let me know, Mr. Gilotti, but I can speak.
Yes, so this is some legislation to propose some rules to govern new installations of fiber optic lines around the city. We've been recently approached by Windstream. They'd like to install fiber across many neighborhoods in the city. And our code is, I don't want to say it was silent, but it was a little bit old or lacking, maybe. Fiber's a newer technology, so we need to establish some rules and some guidelines for these companies. Windstream appears to be the first one here at the table. So that's the legislation before ya. We'd like to get it into place, hopefully, tonight with a one, two, three please, so that this can be on the books for the proposals that Windstream is currently making.
Just to be clear, that's putting the parameters around that. We've been approached by multiple entities that want to come and do this, so it's been very good competition and obviously good environment, which we all want, especially me.
Yeah. Anybody here opposed to one, two, three? I asked Consular Ventura if he would take the second on this. Due to my employer, I have to abstain on this one. Ordinance number six, this is to do an agreement with the Public Defender's Office. I believe this is housekeeping, right?
Yes, sir.
Anyone have any questions on number six? Do you need this to go quickly?
Did we not just do this or did something similar?
Annually.
I mean, like, two months ago?
It does feel like we just did something next. I think it was something else.
We did something.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, one, two, three on that. Number seven is, I think, Mr. Chief.
Sure, I'll speak again. So this is for the Highland Valley View Intersection Project. We've talked about this many times before in this room, still scheduled for construction in the summer of twenty-five, this summer. As we've discussed before, ODOT will actually run this project. They'll bid it out and they will administer the construction. So we partner with ODOT. That's the purpose of the agreement that you see before you on tonight's legislation is to formalize that agreement and that partnering with ODOT. And this is standard procedure, state law, really, that we execute this agreement with ODOT and make the payment for our portion of the project at this time, just prior to the bid that ODOT will conduct. They're scheduled to bid the project on February twenty-seventh.
Okay. Any questions?
Who is the Director of Transportation? Is that here or is it the state level?
Well, that is the guy in Columbus. Well, actually, it's a lady now. It was Dr. Mark Banks for many years. He just retired and there's a new person in his place. I don't even know her name, to be honest with you.
I was just wondering if that was something that, you know, tech, something that we had here.
Yeah, no, it's a Columbus person.
And are you looking for one, two, three on this as well?
Oh, please, yes.
Yeah, they need their money.
Yeah, a lot of them.
They need the money by the end of the month or mid-February.
February fourteenth is the due date, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or go with that? All right, resolution eight. This is related to the sidewalk program. Mr. Monaco?
Yeah, we basically like to get a early jumpstart on this. And over last year, we did it kind of late and we didn't get too much response. Hopefully, doing it earlier will get more contracts to bid on it and hopefully we'll get a better price than we did last year.
And this is just to go for bids or we come back after we got?
We should go for bids.
Correct. Anyone else have any questions?
Well, just to point out that last year's price was not bad.
No, not at all.
No, but if you can get a better price.
Right, but it makes it sound like it was a bid.
On your chart that you made of the addresses, are the ones in yellow ones that have already been done?
That's correct, yeah. We had quite a few residents that took their initiative to get it done already and some are in the process of getting contractors and getting their own prices. So they have until June first to respond to us with a permit or if they do not get a permit by June first, then we assume that they will go to the city to do it. They've been all notified of that.
And this will complete the program, right?
That is correct. This is the entire city.
How often do you anticipate doing a survey of sidewalks?
I would probably for a couple of, like, every four or five years.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that would be the building department still or engineer or just?
That would be, that would be.
Okay.
Anyone else? I'm assuming one, two, three?
Yes.
Okay. It's just for bids, so you'll end up coming back, right?
Yes.
I think you're up again for the first motion we have related to demolition. Do you want to talk to that or is anyone else?
Yes, we have that abandoned gas station that's been a nuisance for the city for the longest time. We've been in contact with the owners and, you know, just to keep it clean. We asked them to chain it so there won't be no access there. We had, you know, some contractors that were working out of the parking lot there, loading and unloading trucks, so it's been really a nuisance. And our order is very clear that if the gas station's been abandoned for three months, then it becomes a public nuisance and the city has the right to demolish. And if they don't, then the mayor has the authority to order that to structure the pumps and everything removed and demolished. So we're at that point right now. They've been notified, you know, we've worked with them as much as we can. We're just, I'm not getting, we're not getting any cooperation from them. So this is basically the last resort.
I've been working on this for quite some time, obviously, with the help of the law department, Nino, and I could tell you that they are not in any hurry to do anything and it's quite frustrating. So it's time for that building to be razed.
But the gas tanks are gone.
I think they removed them. I seem to remember when that shut down.
I believe they were removed.
I think they were removed, but we'll figure all that out.
Shouldn't we know? Know before we?
Well, yeah, we're not gonna. I'm just gonna light a fire and see what happens.
We're gonna stretch the gas first before we do.
To be assessed?
Yes, it'll be assessed.
Anyone else have any questions on that?
No, not on that.
All right. I think that's all we have to discuss.
I have a quick, sort of unrelated question, but sort of related. What is the status of the Key Inn and what's going on over there since we're talking about the other side of the road?
So tied up in litigation is a long story. Short.
But the owners still are trying to sell the building?
The owners are still, yeah, the owners are still the owners. The bank has acquired a right to have the property sold and secure their interest in it, which is basically the mortgage interest and have that repaid off of any sale. But to my knowledge, no sale is being completed.
What is the city's obligation to the safety of the building? I mean, are we?
So we went and secured essentially an injunction for common pleas, so there can be no operation or occupancy out of that facility.
But day to day, we do, we're in Chucks and there. If you've been back there, you know, as we shut down the road, I think we're there daily, are we not? I do know the doors are open. We know it actually works to our favor because that place is dilapidated and it's only gonna serve to take that building down as well. But I don't think it's at a point now where it's even able to be corrected. So essentially, I think that's where it's headed.
Okay.
Anybody else? I have seven minutes till it starts.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
They go back there, Chief?
Good evening. It is January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. It is seven thirty PM. Mr. Hoover, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Fran.
Here.
Mr. Finley.
Here.
Mr. Garvis.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
Now, we will have the presentation of the colors by the Macedonia Fire Department Honor God, Honor Guard, if you'd please stand.
Yo, left. Left. Yo, left. Left. March time, march. Left. 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 Yo, left. Forward, march. Left. Left. March time, march. Left. Color guard, halt. Prepare post.
Could you pray with me? Father God, we just ask that you would give the council wisdoms, they lead, as they make big decisions for this community, God, that it would continue to better this community. God, thank you that we get to live in such an awesome city where it's safe, it's beautiful, and just thank you so much for that. God, thank you for Mike Rigo and for all the service and sacrifice and years that he's put in taking care of people who have been sick or in emergencies, mostly while people have been sleeping and sometimes not knowing what he's doing. And so thank you, God, just that he's done so much for this community while people could be resting at home. And so thank you so much for this opportunity for us to be together. That's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Turn it over to the Honorable Nicholas Smolar for the pledge of allegiance.
Present, halt.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, halt. Oh, jeez. It's a honor to have a proclamation for the retirement of Mike Rigo that I have on our read-a-see. Whereas Michael, Mike Rigo, has dedicated his service to the community as a part-time firefighter EMT on December twenty-third, nineteen ninety-six. That will retire January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, after more than twenty-eight years of exemplary service. Whereas throughout his tenure, Mike's commitment to protecting and serving the people of Macedonia and surrounding areas has been nothing short of outstanding. He'll have this nine hundred and one calls in his first year to a staggering four thousand six hundred and fifty calls last year, including two thousand three hundred and fifty-six calls in Macedonia alone. And whereas Mike has consistently demonstrated leadership, responsibility, and passion for his work, serving as the past president of the Macedonia Firefighters Association, a key member of the Part-Time Negotiation Committee for many years, by volunteering his time and expertise to ensure the proper maintenance of EMS equipment. And whereas Mike's commitment to his family has been a constant source of support throughout his career, being lovingly married to his wife Anne and raising two children, Mike and Missy, while valuing the demands of his service to the public. Whereas Mike enjoys outdoor activities such as hunting, fishing, and camping, where he remains a steadfast supporter of Cleveland sports, sharing these interests with his family and community, and I hope you're a lover. Cleveland's struggles, we all know. Now, therefore, I, Nick Mallar, Mayor of the City of Macedonia, along with the Macedonia Fire Department, the community of Macedonia, wish to honor and celebrate the outstanding contributions of Mike Rigo to our community. We thank him for his selfless service, dedication, and commitment, and wish him the very best and his well-deserved retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike had a nickname we can't use in this room. It's very hard not to use it. That's what we all called him all the time. When Mike joined the fire department, we were working out of the old building. We came from home to where we are today. When I first met Mike, he had no gray hair. I think mine was our start. He's been a valuable asset for these twenty-eight-plus years. Commemorate that. This is your helmet you wore that expires, I mean, you're a home fix for ten years, expires in February. So you're wearing a firearm this long. And this also commemorates the end of your weekends of loneliness, what you wanted to do while you were working, and the evenings where you could do that, now you're just gonna be there going, what do you want? Why do you wear that? I would like to turn it over to Captain Cheswick representing the Macedonia Firefighters.
So, Mike, it's always special when someone retires after putting in so many years, but it dawned on me with you, you are the last of the old generation of part-timers that came from home, responded from home, got, you know, got your car, and then went to the station, and I think that's, that's huge. So you're the last of that generation. On behalf of the Macedonia Fire Department Association, thank you and thanks for being a good friend and all.
One more thing, you know, special challenge point. These are really special. You know what they are? It's a very nice thing we get for retirements or, you know, big political events, so I'll present that to you.
Now, you have to give a speech.
I do, huh? Well, don't really have a speech, but I have a lot of thank yous. To the mayor, to the council, it was an honor to serve the citizens of Macedonia, Sagamore Mills, Northfield Center, so I thank you for that. I'd like to thank the chiefs I've worked for currently, Chief Rickley, Assistant Chief Solinsky, former Chief Tim Black, and former Acting Chief Dan Gagliardi. I appreciate all your help and you putting me on twenty-eight years ago. Back at the old building, so thank you. To the men and women of the Macedonia Fire Department, it was fun working with you guys. We knew how to have a good time, but when the real work had to be done, there wasn't a more professional group of paramedics and firefighters. I'm very happy that I was on that team. Thank you. Last but not least, all my family and friends who came here to support me tonight, especially my wife Anne. With recognition. I apologize for not being at every family function and every school function that I missed doing a shift or whatever here for the City of Macedonia. I love you all very much and I appreciate all your support for the last twenty-eight years. And that's all I have.
One more proclamation of retirement, Jan, if you'd join me up here, please. This one reads, "Whereas Councilman Jan Tully has proudly and faithfully served the City of Macedonia for twenty-six years, dedicating her time, expertise, and unwavering commitment to the community. And whereas Councilman Tully was first elected to the Macedonia City Council in the number of nineteen ninety-five, and has served multiple terms, including from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and ten, and again from two thousand fourteen through two thousand twenty-four, contributing her knowledge and leadership to the governor of the city. Whereas Councilman Tully has held many distinguished roles during her tenure, including Council President, Finance Chair, Council Representative to the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Charter Review Commission. Whereas prior to her election to the City Council, Mrs. Tully actively engaged with the community as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, Recreation Task Force, Field of Dreams Initiative, demonstrating her early dedication to the city. Whereas Councilman Tully served numerous committees, including the Finance Committee, the Hall of Fame, Building and Zoning, Cemetery Board," I know you love that. "Public Works and Utilities, Streets and Highways, providing invaluable service to the city's development and progress. Whereas Mrs. Tully, a retired senior project manager for AT&amp;T, has balanced her career with her role as a devoted wife to her husband Greg, loving mother to their children Meredith, Gregory, and Patrick, all of whom are graduates of Macedonia High School. Whereas Councilman Tully has demonstrated a deep commitment to charitable causes, particularly through her involvement with the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society Foundation, where she has served as a mentor and a runner in marathons and half-marathons, while also raising funds to aid in the search for a cure for blood cancer patients. Whereas Councilman Jan Tully's leadership, dedication, and service to the City of Macedonia have left an indelible mark on the community and her contributions will not be forgotten. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Macedonia's residents and City Council express their deepest gratitude to Councilwoman Jan Tully for her exceptional service and wish her all the best in future endeavors. Her legacy of hard work, compassion, and commitment will continue to inspire us all."
Yeah. I was gonna touch on that. So, dude, I always didn't agree on things. And the weird thing about Jan was when we were in public, she actually, she didn't want to make that feeling of us not being cool with each other. And it was always odd to me, but I understand now after all these years, I've served people for quite a long time, that, you know, it was just her way of doing things and after all those years and that time, I learned to respect that. So thank you for that. But the greatest thing I love about Jan is she loves the baddest fan in the whole wide world, Led Zeppelin. Whenever the fan comes to Marfield, her and I are always there. I just love it, so that's pretty awesome. I appreciate that.
I just rub it in, I don't, um, I couldn't go to Woodstock.
Thank you so much, and I'll hug my head.
Should we start on the get-comfy now?
See who's coming next? They're over in comfort. Who's gonna wheel them? I guess the score would be Firestormers. I always laugh when John Daley would show up, "He'd be drinking beer, smoking us together, and he was approved to ride my car." This is gorgeous. One last thing, the security of the city.
You guys don't want to stay? Where y'all go, what's on that?
Please stay. It's fascinating.
I don't know. I've never seen her. I swear, that's my way of saying it.
All right, Jan and Mike have left the building. Pun intended. Next on our agenda is the approval minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the Thursday, January ninth regular council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comments, we have no one signed in this evening. Correspondents from the clerk?
Unanswered.
Okay, we'll start then with ordinance number eighty.
Eighty will be held again for its second reading.
Ordinance number five.
I'd like to offer ordinance number five, twenty twenty-five, for its first, second, and third readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Ordinance five carries. Ordinance number six.
I'd like to offer ordinance number six, twenty twenty-five, for its first, second, and third reading by title only. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Summit County Public Defenders Commission for the representation of indigenous persons charged with certain violations of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia.
Director Ghadetti.
So this is a housekeeping measure that council passes every year to provide for counsel for indigenous individuals who are charged with crimes that involve potential jail time. Quite simple.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I offer ordinance number six, twenty twenty-five, and move for adoption, and posting the same according to law. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance six carries. Resolution seven.
Mayor, I offer resolution seven, twenty twenty-five, for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Final resolution requesting the Director of Transportation to proceed with project PID one-one-three-one-six-one relative to certain improvements of Highland Valley View Road intersection within the city of Macedonia.
Director Ghadetti.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. This is the intersection we've talked about many times, still on schedule for construction in the summer of two thousand and twenty-five. This is our final agreement with ODOT. They will be bidding and administering the project on our behalf, and this also enables us to make payment to ODOT for our financial portion of the project.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move that we pass resolution number seven, twenty twenty-five, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution seven carries. Resolution number eight.
I move to offer resolution eight, twenty twenty-five, for all three readings by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution authorizing the city engineer to prepare plans, bids, and specifications, and further authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for the twenty twenty-five sidewalk program.
Commissioner Monaco.
Thank you, Mayor. Last year, the city underwent a new sidewalk program. The area that was addressed was just around the Crow area. This year, we decided to do the rest of the city. All the houses were inspected, we found that about three hundred and ninety resident they had some faulty sidewalk, and at this point, we would like to go for bid.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I have one question. What's the deadline for a resident to fix it themselves?
The deadline is June first to apply for a permit, which is gonna be free, and if we don't receive a permit by that day, then we assume that they would want the city to do it.
Perfect, thank you.
Just to reiterate to residents, you'll get a letter explaining all of this, but the program works in that you'll get a letter that says that you need your sidewalk to be fixed because there's some issues with the heights or cracks or holes. You can either let the city have its contractor, which is what we're going out to bid for, you can have the city have its contractor come and do it sometime after June, at which it'll be added to your tax assessment, right? And it'll...
That is correct.
And it'll be six terms, so six halves for you to get it paid off, and everyone's cost is gonna be different based on how much work you need done. So that will go on your tax assessment, or you can find your own contractor and get a permit by June first to have it done yourself. So there's three hundred and ninety residents that are gonna be getting this letter to start the sidewalk process. Did I leave anything out?
Yeah, I just want to point out, too, that this isn't our code. This is something that we've talked about for quite some time, and I'm gonna give an example that's out there, but there's a couple of neighbors where the sidewalk was heaved up too high. Unfortunately, an individual had tripped on that sidewalk and hurt themselves pretty badly, to the point where they were in a hospital for quite some time. The reason we know this, it's all public record, we pulled it up and looked at it, but in their lawsuit against their neighbor, which, believe me, we don't ever want to have that with anything ever, they do cite our code in there, and the code says you have to maintain your sidewalk. So this is a safety issue, I've had a lot of people come to me across the town where, you know, we're at a point where we have to fix these things. It's, I don't want our neighbors and our friends suing each other because we tripped on a sidewalk. We have a responsibility with our property. There's this misnomer out there that, you know, the city's responsible for sidewalks. We are not. It's the homeowner's responsibility. The right of way just means we can work within that area if we have something to do that's for the better good of all. So if you have questions about how that works, please call the building department. Mr. Monaco, I think most of those people have contacted you already, have they not?
Yes, the notice is already gone out, so every resident already know which slab needs to be replaced or repaired, and they know how much it's gonna cost. And new letter is gonna go in after we have all the bids, and we know exactly what the price is gonna be, then they would get a revised price, which more will be more detailed, and it will be very close to what the actual cost is gonna be.
And I want to point out, too, that we go out to bid for this by law, you know, this is not something where the city has any benefit to this other than you correcting a problem in front of your home, so it's not, there's no benefit to the city other than correcting the problem that's in front of you. So to think that we do that's not true, there's no shady business here, the bids are sealed when they come in, and they're open in front of all the people that provided the bid, so I've seen people say out on social media that, "Oh, the city's getting a cut," or, "It's shady business." I'll tell you what, I'll put it out there, public record, it's our social media, on the day that they open those bids up, so you can come and watch it. That's how serious I am, that, you know, this is nothing other than us doing our due diligence and following the letter of the law, so that's my explanation.
Yeah, the best part about the program is that the city is generous enough to allow three years for payment, three installment. The first one will not be due until either June or July twenty twenty-seven, the second in twenty-eight, and the third in twenty-nine, so it's three installment, and it's interest-free, so I think everybody should really go with that option, in my opinion. It would be January, February.
Yeah, it's a tax write-off, and, you know, the thing is, we explored other communities and what they were doing and how they were handling this, and I can tell you that we have the nicest system in place to try and help folks out, so I don't think there's anyone out there that's doing what we're doing, that I'm aware of, so, thank you. And what is your pleasure?
I move to pass resolution eight, twenty twenty-five, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution eight carries.
Any other motions or legislative actions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the issuance of notice pursuant to Macedonia codified ordinance one-three-eight-five-point-eleven regarding the city's intent to demolish the structure located on the property with the mailing address of three sixteen East Highland Road in Macedonia, Ohio.
Second.
Just to point out quickly, this is the BP building, we've been battling them for quite some time to do something about this, there's a lot of things going on there that are not in the best interest of the community, because it's a vacant property, so people feel they can go there and park there and do whatever, so we're at the point now of rectifying the problem, which basically means we're gonna raise the building, and then we're gonna shut it down so it can't be an open parking lot or a place for anything going on there. Good explanation?
Very good explanation, I couldn't have done it better.
Did I miss anything?
No, you did.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now I'll open the nominations for candidates to fill the council vacancy.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Matthew Ferraro to the vacancy.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, so the motion to elect Matt Ferraro to fill the current vacancy on city council with a term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Brant.
Oh, I need a second.
Somebody made that motion.
I will make that motion to elect Matthew Ferraro to fill the current vacancy on city council with a term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brant.
Yes.
Mr. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Gravis.
Yes.
Mr. Vintcher.
Yes.
Welcome, Mr. Ferraro, congratulations. Speech? I'm kidding, but thank you.
I would just like to take a moment to thank all of the candidates that applied. Council received, I believe it was nine applicants, we interviewed every single person that applied, and my personal opinion is that every one of those candidates came with a very detailed resume, a detailed story, a personal history of how they're connected to the city, and it was extremely hard for us to look at all of those candidates and weed people out, so to speak, for lack of a better way of saying it. For those candidates that are here and as well as the ones that might be watching, there are other opportunities in the city that, and I believe we just created a potential vacancy on the BZA tonight, so if you are interested in other avenues of volunteering with the city, I highly encourage you to either reach out to us, reach out to the clerk or the mayor's office, and who knows, maybe some of the resumes we receive might even receive a phone call from the mayor, I don't know, we'll find out. But thank you all for applying, and thank you, Mr. Ferraro, look forward to serving with you.
Yeah, the opening now is up for the BZA, because Mr. Ferraro served on that commission, so we'll be posting that out, and then we'll be looking for a replacement for that, that's a very important board that makes some pretty critical decisions that affect the community, so if you're interested in that, please reach out to me, and we'll take it from there.
We also need can alternate, two alternates?
I think we have them, I'll have to check back, I thought we had one at least. If we don't, we'll have alternates as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Next up is the mayor's report. If you haven't noticed, it's been awfully cold, and we've had a lot of snow and ice, and I want to point out that our service department worked, Dan, is it seventeen days straight? Seventeen days straight, twelve-hour days, two shifts, so, you know, when you're in a truck for that long, and you're pushing that snow, and you're battling the traffic that's out on the roads, you know, it gets exhausting, and anyone that drives in normal conditions will tell you, it's very difficult these days. It's no secret, the one thing that drives me nuts is people in these things driving cars. It's always a problem, but if you can imagine trying to battle snow with the safety of the public at hand, and people not recognizing to back off of the trucks when they're doing their work, it's a lot. I had a very spirited phone call from a lady that used some pretty terrible words, and, you know, we were getting belted, and I mean, it was just coming down, and I gotta tell people, there's just no keeping up with that sometimes, and this is Ohio, and you all have lived here a long time. Lake effect snow is no joke. Mr. Wilson came from the Columbus area, and I know I talk about this all the time, his first couple of years, he didn't have any of that, now he started, he found out real quick what northeast Ohio looks like, because when we get hit, we get hit hard, and it doesn't seem to be letting up, I think it was snowing again tonight, so, you know, just be patient with those guys, you know, we're gonna get to your roads, but our mains are our first priority.
be very close to what the actual cost is going to be.
And I want to point out too that we go out to bid for this by law. You know, this is not something where the city has any benefit to this other than you correcting a problem in front of your home. So it's not, there's no benefit to the city other than correcting the problem that's in front of you. So to think that we do that's not true. There's no shady business here. The bids are sealed when they come in, and they're open in front of all the people that provided the bid. So I've seen people say out on social media that, oh, the city's getting a cut, or it's shady business. I'll tell you what, I'll put it out there, public record, it's our social media, on the day that they open those bids up, so you can come and watch it. That's how serious I am that, you know, this is nothing other than us doing our due diligence and following the letter of the law. So that's my explanation.
Yeah, the best part about the program is that the city is generous enough to allow three years for payment, three installment. The first one will not be due until either June or July 2027, the second in '28, and the third in '29. So it's three installment and it's interest-free. So I think everybody should really go with that option, if I may.
It'll be January.
January.
Yeah. It's a tax write-off, and you know, the thing is, we explored other communities and what they were doing and how they were handling this, and I can tell you that we have the nicest system in place to try and help folks out. So I don't think there's anyone out there that's doing what we're doing, that I'm aware of. So, thank you. And what is your pleasure?
I move to pass resolution eight, 2025, and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution eight carries. Any other motions or legislative actions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the issuance of notice pursuant to Macedonia codified ordinance 1385.11 regarding the city's intent to demolish the structure located on the property with the mailing address of 316 East Highland Road in Macedonia, Ohio.
Second.
Just to point out quickly, this is the BP building. We've been battling them for quite some time to do something about this. There's a lot of things going on there that are not in the best interest of the community because it's a vacant property, so people feel they can go there and park there and do whatever. So we're at the point now of rectifying the problem, which basically means we're going to raise the building, and then we're going to shut it down so it can't be an open parking lot or a place for anything going on there. Good explanation?
Very clear explanation. Couldn't have done it better.
Did I miss anything?
No, you did.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now I'll open the nominations for candidates to fill the council vacancy.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Matthew Ferraro to the vacancy.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, so the motion to elect Matt Ferraro to fill the current vacancy on city council with a term ending December 31st, 2025. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Brandt.
Oh, I need a second.
Somebody made that motion?
I will make that motion to elect Matthew Ferraro to fill the current vacancy on city council with a term ending December 31st, 2025.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Brandt.
Yes.
Mr. Finley.
Yes.
Mr. Garvis.
Yes.
Mr. Ventura.
Yes.
Welcome, Mr. Ferraro. Congratulations. Speech? I'm kidding. But thank you.
I would just like to take a moment to thank all of the candidates that applied. Council received, I believe it was nine applicants. We interviewed every single person that applied, and my personal opinion is that every one of those candidates came with a very detailed resume, a detailed story, a personal history of how they're connected to the city. And it was extremely hard for us to look at all of those candidates and weed people out, so to speak, for lack of a better way of saying it. For those candidates that are here and as well as the ones that might be watching, there are other opportunities in the city that, and I believe we just created a potential vacancy on the BZA tonight. So if you are interested in other avenues of volunteering with the city, I highly encourage you to either reach out to us, reach out to the clerk or the mayor's office, and who knows, maybe some of the resumes we receive might even receive a phone call from the mayor. I don't know, we'll find out. But thank you all for applying, and thank you, Mr. Ferraro. Look forward to serving with you.
Yeah, the opening now is up for the BZA because Mr. Ferraro served on that commission, so we'll be posting that out, and then we'll be looking for a replacement for that. That's a very important board that makes some pretty critical decisions that affect the community. So if you're interested in that, please reach out to me, and we'll take it from there.
We also need an alternate, two alternates?
I think we have them. I'll have to check back. I thought we had one at least. If we don't, we'll have alternates as well.
Yeah.
Next up is the mayor's report. If you haven't noticed, it's been awfully cold, and we've had a lot of snow and ice. And I want to point out that our service department worked, Dan, is it 17 days straight? Seventeen days straight, 12-hour days, two shifts. So, you know, when you're in a truck for that long and you're pushing that snow and you're battling the traffic that's out on the roads, you know, it gets exhausting. And anyone that drives in normal conditions will tell you, it's very difficult these days. It's no secret, the one thing that drives me nuts is people in these things driving cars. It's always a problem, but if you can imagine trying to battle snow with the safety of the public at hand and people not recognizing the back off of the trucks when they're doing their work, it's a lot. I had a very spirited phone call from a lady that used some pretty terrible words, and, you know, we were getting belted. And I mean, it was just coming down, and I got to tell people, there's just no keeping up with that sometimes. And this is Ohio, and you all have lived here a long time. Lake effects snow is no joke. Mr. Wilson came from the Columbus area, and I know I talk about this all the time. His first couple of years, he didn't have any of that. Now he started, he found out real quick what northeast Ohio looks like, because when we get hit, we get hit hard. And it doesn't seem to be letting up. I think it was snowing again tonight. So, you know, just be patient with those guys. You know, we're going to get to your roads, but our mains are our first priority. And if you watch the news, you read the papers, every community out there is having a salt problem. We're not at a point of a problem, but we're in a point of conservation. We're going to do our best to make sure we have salt for the next event because we don't know when the next delivery is going to come. Now, the way we rectify that is with the new service building, we're going to have a salt dome that's going to hold the entire year's salt in one dome. So we can eliminate that problem altogether, and if we need more, we can order it, and we'll see that long in advance of that. So there's a lot of things and steps we're taking that we're going to fix that problem. But the moral of the story is, I want to thank our service department because those guys have worked very, very, very hard. And if you see them, please thank them, don't yell at them. They're out there working hard. It really is a difficult task, being stuck in a truck 17 days straight for 12 hours. It's a lot. It's very tiring, it's very dangerous, and it's hard to operate that vehicle. So I just want to give my respect to the service department. Dan, your team has done an amazing job, and I want to thank all of them for that. Next, we met with the criteria architect for the new service building. More to come on that. We're kind of in the preliminary stages of what we're going to do moving forward with that, so we'll have more coming to council that likely in the next meeting or two. Another big change we had was cardboard recycling. I don't know why this is such a crazy topic, but we had the bins all around town where we were allowing people to put the cardboard in there. You can recycle cardboard at your house. Kimball picks it up, you don't need to stick it in a bin. That's going to come at a cost. It was free, but the problem was with that being free, they weren't picking them up. So then people would put all the cardboard on the side of it. It's been awfully windy lately, what do you think happens? It just creates a whole mess that we don't want to deal with. So we are eliminating the cardboard recycling. We still have one can out here at City Hall. Please, I beg you not to put anything in there. It is full to the brim. We cannot take anymore. There was an individual today I saw came and threw it on the side of it, and I just am very frustrated with that. But you can recycle at your home. You do not need to bring it anywhere else but your home. Put it out for Kimball to take. That's a benefit of our residents, they will take anything you put out there, so please put it there. We suspect that there was people outside of our community filling that up too, so it really doesn't make a whole lot of sense for us to pay for that now because that's not very logical and cost-effective. So we are eliminating those altogether. You can recycle at your home, please continue to do that. Last but not least, please don't drive distracted. Put the phones down, drive the car. It's very dangerous, especially with the snow and ice conditions. Concentrate on the road. Committee reports.
Parks and Rec Commission, our first meeting of the year, last Wednesday, to catch up on what went on over the winter and what is coming up in the upcoming seasons. They're already getting ready for spring sports. We had full slates of commission members there, so that was nice to see be elected a new chairperson. It'll be Stacy Suji this year with Karen Bartolozzi as our vice chair. Our next meeting is the third week in February, which, or the third Wednesday in February, which is the 19th. So if anyone wants to come see our meeting, it'll be upstairs at 6 o'clock at the rec center. End of my report.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Hearing none, we'll go onto department reports, starting with Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just echo everything you said.
I was more giving the thanks to you, so...
But 100%, you know, the guys, they have, they work 17 days straight. Those are long days, I've done it myself for those many days. It's tough. It really wears on you. Everyone's kind of on edge right now, I think, in the office, out of the office. It's a tough time of year. We do have some salt. But yeah, we're absolutely in conservation mode, so be patient. We are not salting every neighborhood and every court and every single, you know, place there's asphalt, so it's definitely, we had to dial it way back. But in that regard, we're in better shape than some cities that really don't have anything. So we do have some serious hills here, some curves, some bridges that we really, we got to try to be ready for, so I don't think it's over yet, from what I hear. Costello was telling me it's supposed to get super cold, take another dive and all this, and so, yeah, we're not there yet. But yeah, and then the recycle dumpsters, we made that decision. I think it's the right decision. I talked to council about it. I mean, I just encourage everyone to recycle at home, and like you said, we already paid for curbside recycling. And then besides that, you know, in the meantime, like today, we are out filling potholes. The mayor called me today about potholes, and I said, yeah, we're out, rounding about. I saw them right after that. I saw the guys, I don't know if they, I didn't even call them. I don't know if they just, they knew, but they're on 82. I know, I noticed there are a lot of potholes out, but that's what you have. But rounding about, be patient. So I'm sure, you know, it's snowing again, so we're back in the snow trucks. So we'll hip potholes as soon as we can again, and hopefully we get a little bit of a break next week. That's it, end of report.
Thank you. Director Gelati.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just getting ready to bid out some public works projects here in the very near future. Our road program, Ledge Road resurfacing, and working alongside Nino to bid out the sidewalk program soon. End of report.
Director Chaddick.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that Parks and Rec just came up with a new sport for the city of Macedonia because, let's be real, all you're going to do is put in more potholes the rest of this winter, so we should come up with street golf. We can just do golfing in the street, knock the ball down. We'll use a bigger ball, like a bocce ball type thing. Think it'll work great. We'll repurpose the potholes. On a more serious note, as we've had zero-degree temperatures for the last three days, we finally got heat in the downstairs of the rec center. I actually talked to a couple people today who didn't even know we didn't have heat in the first floor of the rec center. So we just got that done, so I'm excited about that. And we'll have some boiler work done in the next two weeks in our activity pool pump room, so we're excited to get that done. And on a very positive note, I wanted to highlight our USA, so we have the man race swim team. We have a portion that does splash swimming, which is more recreational, and we have a portion that does USA swimming. So we've really built this program up. Lori's done a great job over the last several years building this program up, joined USA Swimming about two and a half years ago. And in the last regional meet that took place, the boys' team finished second in the USA tournament, which was absolutely huge to have so early in our start of this. Two boys won the High Point Award. One was a 10U and the other one was 11 and 12-year-old. And we set 16 new team records at that meet. So it's very impressive to see. And just so everyone's clear on this, most of these swimmers then move on to Nordenia High School. So we are the feeder program for the high school. So it's exciting to see the development of our youth then take place into high school. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Director Vares.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let everybody know it was a very smooth transition into the new year. We're creating POs. We've closed the year, so I want to thank my staff, because I was out sick for three of those days at the beginning of January, and they just, you know, muddled on and got things done. So I want to thank them for that. We will be putting up the 2025 Resident Refund Form by the end of the month. End of my report.
Thank you. Director Collins.
Thank you, Mayor. 26 help desk tickets since the last meeting. Just want to say congratulations to Mike and Jan on their retirement, and thank you to the service department for a great job with the streets. End of report.
Thank you. Commissioner Monaco.
Thank you, Mayor. We are implementing a new software program in the building department. This new program, the contractor will be able to do everything remotely. They'll be able to register, they'll be able to obtain permits, make payments, and they will be able to receive inspection reports. We interviewed three vendors. The cheapest one was cloud permits. We really liked what they had to offer, and they're also saving us some money. I'd like to thank the mayor, Kyle, and Mark for all the help on this, implementing this program. Some of the upcoming projects in the city, St. Gregorius Church is putting in addition. The addition is 6,000 square feet, and includes a fellowship hall and a retreat center. Specialty lubricant at 8300 Corporate Park, they're adding about 50,000 square feet to do an already an existing large building, which is already 68,000 square feet. National Church Residence at 10439 Valley View is building a three-story, 54 housing units for seniors 55 and older. We have a new building that's proposed to be built at 1325 East Highland. This building's going to be divided in three sections. One is going to be retail, it's going to be also business and warehouse. The Holiday Inn Express at 20 Grosscott Way is ready to submit some drawings. And then we have two housing development going on. One is the Valley Preserve, there's 58 units housing development, and another one is a subdivision, it's called the Valley Meadow Estate, which is proposed at the east corner of Valley View and East Twinsburg Road. This is kind of an upscale project. And finally, Smart Storage will open some units for rentals soon. They have about 500 total units. They're planning on opening a few of them just to, you know, to get them going. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. No report for HR this evening.
Chief Ripley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank council for indulging us as we celebrated Mike's career. It was very important, he'd been here a long time. It's a shame Mrs. Tully left. She spent many decades supporting the fire department. I would just like to remind folks that if your fire hydrant hasn't buried by your contractor plowing your snow, we won't be able to find it. And it's your house that's on fire, you're probably not going to be real happy about that. So if you have somebody young in your house, go out, unbury it so we can get access to it if we need it, because time is of the essence at those times. And be careful with these frigid temperatures and walking outside. We've had a lot of calls with injuries from people falling on the ice. End of report.
And don't look now, but it's a blizzard going on right now. Chief Lieutenant Costello.
Thank you, Mayor. The police department would like to announce that we have opened up our competitive testing exam for the position of dispatcher with Macedonia Communications, and the position of police officer within the police department. So if anyone knows anyone who's looking to join the ranks, encourage them to go to the city's website and complete the application there, and also the National Testing Network website. And that's the end of report.
Thank you. Director Ghadetti.
No report, sir.
Any unfinished business?
Mayor, if I may. Not to take anything away from Mr. Wilson and the service department, but I think we should also recognize our safety forces, police and fire. They're out there 12 to 24 hours a day also, and they have to get out of their vehicles more often than not, being a retired safety forces veteran.